Our flag, Mayor Pro Tem, this house.
Join me, Hugh Woodman. Good and gracious having followed, thank you for this day. Thank you for the bountiful blessing we receive each and every day. Lord, we ask that you continue to watch over the city, protect us, guide us, and direct us as we, in all that we do. Be those the same, Lord, that all discussions, decisions will be pleasing at your side. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas side, the flag of the city of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Our next item of business are Citizens to be Heard 2018-286, and I have no one registered for that. So we'll move to the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion without separate discussion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately.
A motion to the consent agenda.
Second motion for approval, and a second, record your votes, please. It does pass seven to seven. We'll move to 2018-289, conduct a public hearing and consider an act upon an ordinance for a specific use permit for a restaurant located within a fourteen hundred plus or minus square foot portion of a building on Lot Two, Block One, Hawkins Meadows Commercial.
Thank you, sir. This is for a specific use permit for a restaurant that is a little above the square feet, as shown in your staff report that you have there in front of you. The specific use permit, the location of the specific use permit is an existing structure that you might all be familiar with, is the Anytime Fitness Building, right by the brand-new 711 on FM 663. The purpose of that building when it was originally constructed was to have a mixed-use development to include retail, restaurants, some professional office, a mixture of streets. This proposed SCP, it does meet all of our parking requirements, or minimum parking requirements for a mixed-use retail center. It includes all our fire lane access requirements. And any post signs will be required to meet all our sign code regulations. We did not notice all property owners within two hundred feet. Zero feedback in favor, zero feedback in opposition. This would be for the planning and zoning commission just last week. They did announce, we recommend approval of this, six to zero. And staff also recommends approval of the proposed specific use permit. This does require a public hearing, and I can answer any questions at the time.
Is there anyone in the public who wishes to speak on this? Have a motion to close public hearing.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Second. Have a motion to close public hearing, and a second, record your votes. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
On the parking, obviously, I haven't been over at that facility, so a restaurant should carry a little bit more parking requirements than maybe some of the other whatever's going to go in there. Just thinking, Anytime Fitness is in there right now, right? Just saying.
And this would take over one suite. This building was designed to be a mixed-use retail center. The parking ratio that we used for this does accompany for different uses such as restaurants, small retail, other uses such as Anytime Fitness. And the whole purpose of the ratio is to kind of balance each other out with the different types of uses. Very similar with the last specific use permit we did off of FM 663 for a proposed Thai restaurant. If you do recall, the same kind of situation, parking was designed for a mixed-use retail. So in event this ever goes away, another use comes in, the parking still should be able to meet the minimum requirements.
The only parking over there is in the front, right?
I know there's a front, there's some inside.
Any other questions? Is that a motion?
May I approve?
Have a motion for approval, and a second, and a second, record your votes, please. It does pass seven to zero. We'll move to 2018-290, conduct a public hearing and consider an act upon an ordinance amending the City of Midtown's zoning ordinance specifically amending section 3.5221, wood fence material standards.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. This past July, the city council adopted revised ordinance related to the city's residential fencing standards. At that time, we were focused mainly on post-installation. We looked at pipe fencing, bog wire fencing, but did not address the acceptable wood materials, specifically for pickets. Currently, the ordinance, as it stands right now, only allows for spruce and for cedar. Staff is proposing this be expanded to still include spruce and cedar for pickets, but also include what we would call any other naturally rot-resistant material. This would include but not be limited to materials such as cypress, redwood. In addition, we're also proposing that alternative wood materials may be considered if such material is deemed to be of superior quality and can prove to have maybe a longer lifespan. This would obviously be reviewed and determined by our planning director and our chief building official. We did go to the Planning and Zoning Commission on August 21st. They did recommend approval of the text amendment. Staff also recommends approval as presented. And without taking questions, you may leave.
Questions? Another close public hearing?
Second.
We will close in just one second. Was there anyone that wished to speak on this? No, I'm not giving you recommendations. And record your votes, have a motion to close public hearing in a second. Record your votes, please.
We do have a...
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
I'm kind of curious why the city carries what material people use for their fencing. I don't really see it being a relevant matter to the city.
Sure. As far as like materials, you know, there are some materials out there that just don't have, don't seem to last very long. They tend to rot very quickly, very easily. In our city, we're looking for materials that have that longevity, have that type of quality that can withstand the test of time, I guess, for the most part. And again, this is mainly focused only on the wood picking side. We have sections also that address wrought iron fencing, we have sections that address PVC fencing. But again, this is just an expansion of a section that already currently exists within our zoning ordinance.
And it has existed for a long time.
Has existed for a very long time, but was only limited to spruce and cedar. We have always prohibited pine, whether it's treated or not treated. This, again, just more or less expands the different types of use, or the different types of materials that could obviously be utilized for fencing.
Actually gives them more options.
Absolutely, absolutely, because if somebody came to us wanting to use redwood or cypress, actually, that would not be allowed in our city, although that's probably a more superior type compared to spruce material.
Sometimes HOAs require certain types of wood, and we don't have any control over that, you know, whatever they require. Usually, it's stuck to the last one. And that does pass seven to zero. Thank you.
Is that a vote?
Oh, okay. Any other questions? Okay. I'll second. Record your votes, please. And it does pass seven to zero. We'll move to 2018-291, conduct a public hearing regarding the proposed fiscal year 2018, 2019 annual operating budgets for the City of Midtown.
This is a public hearing regarding the annual operating budget for the city. We've had several meetings, including workshops where we've talked about the budget that's proposed, as well as the tax rate that is proposed. I'll remind everyone that the ad valorem tax rate is .708244 and has been for several years. And that's broken out into two pieces. For maintenance and operations, it's .381223, and for interest and sinking or debt, it's .327021. That will generate an additional $14,857,900 of revenue at a hundred percent collection rate for maintenance and operations, and $12,827,900 for debt service or interest and sinking. And that doesn't create any funds that will be transferred to the TURF. There are a couple of things that we have not seen yet until tonight that should be in front of you on the dais, but one is the Midtown Pid Special Revenue Fund. That is purely the operating fund of the Midtown Pid. There are only two ones that really change from year to year, and I'd like to point those out to you. The first one is line 207 under term expenditures. That's for landscaping, and then also water usage for their watering of their common areas. That is in 765. But primarily, you know, that particular Pid is only used for maintenance in the common area and the park. So if I have any questions on that, if anyone has them. The other item is the change sheet that has changes that have been made after our July 24th, 2018 meeting. And I will direct you down to the expenditure area, that's the area that there's going to be change. There are four changes that I wanted to bring up. One of them is an $8,644 salary adjustment in our admin department. Then there's also the MCDC participation that they approved at their last meeting in the field replacement for the MISD TERF. And then we also have a revised water line item based on recent usage in the parks. That is going to be a little bit higher, so we've revised that estimate. And then there's also a salary, a small salary adjustment in Department 30, oh, I'm sorry, 25. And so those are the only changes that were proposed at this point to the budget. And then we also have a copy attached to the agenda item that shows the notice that we have published throughout the public hearings. So I guess with that, I just need to have you open the public hearing. And we don't take action tonight, it's just a public hearing.
And I do have one speaker. Tim Woodman.
Sir?
You're registered to speak. Oh, you're putting non-speaker, I'm sorry. Yeah. But he's in opposition of that, so, okay.
Mine should be up there too, as in opposition to that too.
You were registered to the tax rate.
I put both.
Okay, okay.
Well, I'm saving my speaking part for that part, but I wanted my opposition to be registered.
Okay, that's fine.
Mayor, if it's okay, we did have a couple of items on the budget that I would, we still need a little bit more direction on so that we can prepare for September 11th day. The first item on that is the emergency services district. I know we had some discussion on that during the workshops, and the consensus that we had, from my recollection, is that we were moving on with the annual contract that we have in place, but then wanting to discuss that further as we went to next year. But one thing that we really did not give clarification on is the ESD has come forward with a supplemental agreement that they want, which would provide a $150,000 one-time fee for help with our fire training center. In addition to that, for that $150,000, they want us to provide service for three years to the western side of our community or the western side of the ESD. So we would need some direction on that if we want to bring forth that agreement at a future meeting, and either have that go into participation for the fire training center or just bring it into our general fund. So that is one of the items that we're still looking to get some clarification on from the council. The next item is the senior tax ceiling. I think we had pretty much pulled to institute a ceiling for seniors. The part that we still need a little clarification on is the exemption for senior citizens, future senior citizens. And so at one point, we had talked about eliminating that exemption for folks that turn 65 in the future. It would still pertain to those that are already 65, but, and then the question is, for those that are going to turn 65 in the future, do we keep an exemption? Do we eliminate an exemption? Or do we change the amount of the exemption? It can be, we can have a combination of a ceiling and an exemption, and that exemption amount can be set at any dollar amount if the council wishes. As you know, our current exemption is $70,000. We also do not currently offer the ceiling. So we have good direction on the ceiling, but looking for something on the exemption amount.
Chris, you want to discuss that and resolve that tonight? Do you want to do that at a future meeting?
If the council can give us some direction tonight, it'd be good. If we need to have a future workshop, then we could certainly schedule one for next week.
From my standpoint, one would continue the 70, and anyone turning 65 in the future would get the 70. And the ceiling would apply at current appraised value for anyone currently 65 and anyone future 65, it would be what their appraised value is when they turn 65. That's, you know, that's my opinion.
I agree with you.
I like that. Is this something that we would be talking about every year as far as the exemption part?
We could make it, we could make it an annual thing, or we could make it permanent.
We've not talked about it.
We've never discussed it.
You do not have to, I mean, once the exemption's in place, you don't have to change it. I mean, you don't have to approve it every year. It would stay until you're ready to change it, and then you can change it. We have typically brought it back up for discussion every year and just re-approved the same number we've had, $70,000, for a long time. But it could be brought up, or if it's not discussed or not repealed, it just stays in effect.
But it can be brought in.
It can be brought in, so we're not locking ourselves in for either the next two weeks to say something that five years from now we may have reapproved.
It's for this year.
I understand, I understand. Okay, I just wanted to make sure we weren't going down a path that you couldn't backtrack from.
No, you could always change it, and in the future, absolutely.
What was the dollar in that issue?
The $70,000 is what we were...
And what does that equate to?
Eight hundred, it's roughly $845,000. With the $70,000 exemption, we forward about $845,000 in taxes.
So I have two, Josh and February, do we have a consensus on that, Dwayne?
I'll say yes.
Yes.
Right, so we'll bring forth then, I think the main thing we have to bring forth is the ceiling, which we already have the 70 in place. We may bring it forth again, just to make sure the codified everything, but the main direction there is the ceiling.
Will we do that on our next call meeting?
September 11th.
September 11th, okay.
Before we have a vote on the budget, the tax rate.
I'd love to have a printout of what other cities do, just so, because I think we're going to get a print of the crop.
I can tell you in Ellis County, we will be. The highest that I know of right now is $50,000.
And none of the other cities have a ceiling either?
No, some of them, I think Ovilla has a ceiling and $50,000.
Fred did Red Oak have like $35,000 ceiling.
Do you have the list?
We saw it in the workshop.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree with that, yeah.
Red Oak has a ceiling and $20,000. So I believe Ovilla, Mansfield have the $50,000, and then Waukesahatchee has the ceiling.
If you want any feedback about the purchase of Service District, I would say can, but I don't believe that we need to lock in taxpayers until they have the authority to tell us to go outside our city limits and provide services where we're subsidized. So I would prefer not to put it in the budget or approve it, and then have a referendum vote in May.
Not till the sun, exactly.
I'll lean on the side of keeping the ESD in place for now, but I don't like the idea of locking ourselves in for three years.
But if you remember, I think in our budget discussions, it was that we would go ahead this year and accept the monies coming in in this year's budget, but the referendum, we got that on the ballot, that would determine...
I just don't want to lock ourselves in with a contract.
We're already locking ourselves in for that west side, for that gentleman, you know, on 875, for that no man's land kind of over there.
It wasn't as if it'd be $50,000 a year or $150 otherwise. And then also 10%, we were going to get the 10 cents, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we'd still get the tax money that they collect for those areas.
For that southwest area.
That's correct. So it would be in addition to the $150 or the $50 a year.
Do we have any historical data now of how often we're going out there?
We could pull that area, we have a map of the area. We could pull that information if you want to see how many runs we've made into that particular area.
The thing, I'm not, because I don't live out there, but the ESD has no way really, it takes about, I think they told us about 40 or 45 minutes to get, if we didn't go out there, it takes quite a long time to get somebody out.
We are excited to talk about this.
Yeah, we do.
Councilman, for our answer to your question, I want a specific number, but the area that, we created a document, I don't know if you can put that up there, the specific area that they're asking us to serve are areas that are closest to us in our community and further away from the City of Ovilla. But the Red Haste area is basically what they're asking to be a part of that three-year agreement. And it's, as you can see, it's probably the less populated area of the ESD. I can try to run numbers on there, but I can tell you it's not a highly demanding area because there's not a lot of population in it.
Another question I want to have, as far as residents just to the south of our actual ESD, that fall actually also out of our city limits, how are those served?
That falls into the area of April, the response area.
And I would assume that the east side falls into the service department for Waukesahatchee?
ESD six. ESD six, I think. It's the one out of, it's old Waukesahatchee rule, but it's now ESD six.
So who does the, there is a service provider down on 287 Business, correct? EMS provider?
287 Business in...
Waukesahatchee, I apologize.
So the City of Waukesahatchee has a private provider, AMR, American Medical Response. I believe they do have a office there at 28735. I'm not sure what they actually staff there.
Do they only service in the city limits there?
They service the City of Waukesahatchee, the City of Red Oak, and then the rest of the county.
So did, had they always served that, or did the City of Waukesahatchee have their own ambulances before?
City of Waukesahatchee did originally have their own ambulances.
So when the City of Waukesahatchee decided to stop that, somebody did fill the gap?
They contracted at the time with East Texas, and East Texas then provided that service.
On the $50,000, is that something they approached us with a dollar amount? Did we negotiate that with, how'd the $50,000 come about?
So just a little backing up and a little history here. As we started into this roughly two-year process to design a fire station, go out to bond election, have the voters vote on it, the ESD did come to us and ask how they can partner with us and participate. The original conversation centered around them splitting the land cost purchase at the time, which we were receptive to, but after we kind of ran the traps on that, the only way that they could actually give us $500,000 towards the land price was that they were going to have, they were going to have to take out a loan. They had enough debt capacity to take out that loan. They didn't make loan payments on that, but the only way they could take out a loan is they had to have ownership. They'd have a deed, some type of certificate that said, here's where the loan's going, we have to own half the property. After we, you know, massaged that a little bit, we decided that that just really wasn't a viable option, so we had to walk away from that. So then they came back and asked, is there a way that we can help you with your fire training facility? We have a certain amount of money in our cash reserves, our reserve fund. It's not the same as a loan. We can take it out today and give it to you, but we need time to replenish that. That's why there's a three-year window that they passed, that would allow them over the next three years to start to replenish that rainy day fund for their debt that they own.
I just, for me personally, I don't see how we can continue to expend even a dollar outside the city limits that are city taxpayer dollars for some of these issues without, some sort of referendum for me to be satisfied on it myself. I know others feel differently, but I can't support it unless we can get some type of, let the voters make the decision.
That's what we decided in the workshop. Next year, if we do it, before we do it next year, we would have that.
And I agree with that, however, you did not agree to an additional three-year contract. That's what we're talking about right now.
I'm fine with going on with what we have, with no contract, with no additional dollars as it is, and let the voters make the decision, and then they can work out longer-term contracts on out-of-service provisions or out-of-district provisions after the voters have a decision, chance to make a decision, by that time.
And just so I understand, what's the, sorry, reasoning for putting it to a citywide vote?
Because we, at least I may get wrong on this, and I'm happy to be corrected, but name me one other service, emergency or any service that we provide as a city service outside of our city limit boundaries with city taxpayer dollars. What is it? We don't do roads, we've been asked to before, we couldn't do that. We can't do, we can't provide sewer outside of our, so what is the other, any other service we provide?
Well, we have, on that side, we have provided water service. We've had outside city limit water customers before.
But they pay the full price.
Yeah, but that's... But also, you know, we would need to look at, I think you get into even the service that we provide to the City of Ovilla. We have a long-term contract with them, you know, whether that's dollar for dollar or not, we're servicing it with existing resources that we already have, but whether or not that is 100% covered on every year, you know, you probably have to look at it on a year-to-year basis, depending on how many runs we made, et cetera, to determine if we are completely covered in that cost on an annual basis. So I mean, there are some other examples, but I mean...
But of the scope, of the scope of a range of 12,000 to 14,000 residents?
No, I mean, because I listen to only four or five thousand people.
We can pick little donut holes, but we're talking 12,000 to 13,000 people. So that's my issue, is I just want to give the voters and officers a note on this, if they want to. Well, how they feel about it.
Didn't we, didn't some of the announcers come back that says that right now of our 70 cents of tax money we pay now, about 17 cents of that is fire and EMS protection? about seventeen cents of that is, is fire and EMS protection? And all we get out of the E S D right now, after they collect their ten to take off their operating expenses, is about seven cents. So we, we've got a deficit there that I think is what's precipitated the conversation. Is that, is that not right, Mike?
I think during the, during the, uh, budget workshop, didn't we provide numbers that didn't show a ten cent deficit? And that there are other revenue sources that the city takes in other than property taxes that offset that? So it's not a direct relationship to just property taxes.
But what is the deficit then?
I think we decided it was between one and two pence.
Something that, that is being overlooked is the fact that the cost of operating the fire department. We, the citizens, bear that cost. Now, whether we service E S D or not, is not gonna change that cost. In other words, it doesn't cost us any more money to go out and service them, because we're gonna have to pay for all this anyway.
Well, the only, the only, the only additional cost we have.
And they're gonna come back and give us, I think, well, six hundred thousand or more dollars for us to go out and service their people. So, I, I, I have a hard time understanding that if we cut them off, well, we're taking six hundred thousand dollars or more out of the budget, up to a million. And if we leave them out, we're not really spending any more money than we would spend if we didn't do it.
But we could continue that rationale to further our city moves out on crossing the city limit line to continue to offer service, cause we already have the equipment. We could do that with roads and, uh, fire service and police service and all types of things, and produce service to folks who don't pay, pay taxes in the city.
And I, I, personally, I think that we should continue the service because the three years, even if we did the three years, that gives them time to, like Dale said, to replenish their funds and to make plans. If we say in three years, you know, we're not gonna do that anymore, then they have time to, right now, they don't have the money or the time.
We're still serving, we, we serve it right now, it's not like they're not being served.
And then, and why should we not get paid for it?
That tells us as a council, the taxpayers tell us exactly to cross that line and spend money outside. Then it may be that the taxpayer says, yeah, we wanna continue to do it, I don't know that you can anticipate that vote one way or the other. But, I'm gonna say again, I don't believe, I have the authority to spend taxpayers' money outside of our city limits.
And I would like to state, um, I apologize, I'm stating once again what I think, and I don't think what I think really matters, because I think it's more important for me to have the referendum and let the taxpayer, who, which their dollars make the decision on how that, that be handled. That, I apologize for bringing.
But is that not why they elected us?
Well, but, but when I'm, when I'm exercising a opinion or a decision on tax dollars that are outside the city limits, that's their money, I view that as a whole different situation than I'm making a decision.
And I understand that, but, but.
Where, where do you draw the line if, uh, you use the logic of that, it does have bone marrow to it. Shouldn't we also include a vote to the city of what the overall tax rate should be? Because part of that is going into the fire, which is partly deciding on where the fire expense goes. I mean, now all of a sudden, we're having every year, every citizen vote on what the rate is, and we're backwards from that. I, I don't know where the line is, but, uh, if we use logic on just fire only outside the city, then we need to figure out what the rate is from the citizens in order to figure out what fire approval is out of the city. So, I, I, I think that may be swinging too far out, in my opinion.
I guess I'm hearing, I'm hearing that things are going around and around that, uh, maybe we don't need to be here at all, we just let the citizens tell us, you know, that's the referendum, what we need to do.
The idea here for me at the workshop was when, uh, Chris and Ann, uh, broke this down on the, the last sheet on the last day, which was two columns, fixed rate, uh, here's our software maintenance, here's our janitorial supplies, here's, uh, utilities, gas, electric, telephone, the whole nine yards comes up to seven point one billion dollars. And then I'd ask the question, well, we're obviously not gonna, uh, send everything that we do outside of the city, so what portion goes out of the city, and the answer was fourteen percent of our calls go outside the city. So then the next logic is, well, we can't do away with E S D and cut off fourteen percent of one of the three fire stations. So no, that's fixed deal. So the question came, what are the variables when the phone rings, there's somebody that needs an ambulance out in the E S D area? What's the cost to go out there, service that need, taking to the hospital, and bringing it back? So there were specific, uh, variable costs versus fixed costs. And the variable cost came up to eight hundred and fifty-five thousand a year, and then fourteen percent of that is in E S D, of which, that's only a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine. For that hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars, program gives us almost nine hundred thousand dollars. I see that as a revenue stream more than a cost. That's what I see.
I agree.
Well, I think I stated in the budget workshop, to me, it's not all about money, it's about having the authority to do it.
That's my whole issue, I'll, I'll rest on all that, that, I'll, 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 I'll rest it on that, that, I'm not gonna talk numbers anymore. It's, it's about me not feeling comfortable making decisions on, on out of city limit dollar expenditures.
Personally, I think we have, as a community, I mean, you know, we're providing a community service, and, and if, I don't know that we're really using that much money, so, uh, you know, ours had the, you know, those were the figures that were provided to us.
I have a quick, quick question.
And if you have, one thing on ambulance, outside the city, if we send an ambulance out there, we take what the entrance pays, and then we bill them for the rest. Inside the city, we don't bill them for anything, the city pays for all of it, so.
We bill the entrance.
We bill the entrance.
Yeah, yeah, but there's a write-off, but a lot of times they don't pay us. So, uh, but we don't write off anything outside, anyone else would care.
I think Mr. Sibley made a good point that we are equipped right now to handle the E S D. And my question is going forward, like, right now, we said it's about seventeen cents, oh, the seventy cents goes toward, uh, fire and EMS. My question is going forward, if we were to cut off the E S D, would that slow the rate of growth of our fire staff and our, and our being equipped? Does that slow the rate of growth for our entire fire department? And, and would that reflect in the percentage of our overall budget for EMS and fire going down over, over several years?
The only, the only factor that would change on that, Justin, that I see right now would be the wear and tear on the equipment. The wear and tear and the additional fuel and, and, you know, for those.
So we don't have extra staff and extra trucks because we serve the E S D, it's gonna be the same regardless?
As we grow, then the people that are inside the city limits will make up that gap of the fourteen thousand that we're covering. So it's, it's gonna be, uh, the same thing regardless of, of the growth inside the city. I mean, obviously, outside the city is al- also growing, so at what point do we say, okay, this is enough? And, and we don't, somebody else says, we don't have the authority to go out there, not just Mike and I.
I think we've already said that we were gonna do the, the vote for it, the referendum, whatever you wanna do next year. But today, we need to work with the budget, with, with what's coming up.
And I, we did it, we have already done that. The only thing he's asking about is the extra contract of every year, and I said, no.
Okay, so, uh, how many of you favor accepting the hundred and fifty thousand?
I'll take the hundred and fifty.
I'll defer to the experts whether it's fifty a year or one fifty up front.
Right, yeah. So there's how many?
I'll, I'll take the one fifty.
Two, three, four.
And you're gonna go into a three-year, this is for a three-year contract?
Yes.
And we will be, and we will have to bring this back, and we'll bring it forward to the council to actually vote on the legal language in the, in the agreement.
So can I, can I ask a question so I understand? If we enter into a three-year contract now, after we discussed a referendum and, and workshop, does that mean that now it does no good to have a referendum for three more years?
No, it, no, but what, what it would do is, let's say we had a referendum and it got declined, we would stop serving the remainder of the E S D except for what's in that red hatched area. And then at the end of that three years, we quit serving the red hatched area as well. But the vast majority of the, uh, the calls, which is up in that, you know, in the Ovilla area, you could end that next year, the year after, anytime. So this three-year deal is separate, and it would only pertain to that area in the red hatched, uh, the west and the south.
But in other words, if we didn't have the three-year deal, and, and the, the voters voted to.
The whole thing, the whole.
The whole thing, but now what you were entering into, a portion of that, we won't be able to.
Not for three years, that's correct.
But we still have five years right left on our Ovilla agreement.
It ends in twenty twenty-four.
With Ovilla, then we have to go to Ovilla, so we still have to go through that area to go to Ovilla. And so we, you know, that's an agreement clause, uh, it's not anybody's fault, but the school district built a school up there in Ovilla, E T J. And so I personally, I think we have more responsibility to the service.
Well, we will, we will draft the, uh, agreement three and bring it back for council's consideration, uh, through this process. And we, well, we probably need to discuss that on.
That's another meeting that's not on the agenda for tonight.
I guess we, we'll need to bring that back for further discussion. That's the, the items we had on, on the budget at this time.
Can I ask a real quick question on the budget? Cam mentioned at a hundred percent collection rate, but we have an average of what our collection rate normally is?
It's usually ninety-nine and something percent, but when legally, we have to say it's a hundred percent, cause we have to add both current collections and delinquent collections from the year before. If that number goes over a hundred percent, you have to, you have to say it's a hundred percent. But typically, for the current year's taxes, it's usually ninety-nine, ninety-nine and a half.
Have we always had a ninety-nine percent collection rate?
Yep.
Long, long time ago.
They go around here by the taxes, like, or not.
Long time. So when we, when we do the budget, it's usually at that ninety-nine percent rate that we're only giving, and then we have a separate line for the delinquent taxes, on the, on the budget right now, but, uh, on the required legal publications, we'll put a hundred percent exception.
Do we just, um, this is a continued item, do we just post, I mean, continue the public hearing?
No, no, we, we, we'll, we'll have a separate, uh, public hearing.
So we close the public hearing, but we don't, we don't take a vote?
No vote.
How many votes to close the public hearing?
Okay, I have a motion to put those public hearings in a second, according to budgets, please.
Um, are, you aren't gonna allow people to speak?
Are you registered? I have no paperwork for the register.
Didn't know I was supposed to register, but I think other people would like to say something potentially.
You'll have to go back and get, they'll give you a form to fill out, and you'll have to fill that out.
Is anybody else see what's inside him? Okay. Would you like to fill out one, sir?
Sure.
There you go. Uh, what agenda item do we need?
Uh, two ninety-one.
Two ninety-one, will you reference on your agenda item?
Go ahead and, and if you wanna speak, go ahead and speak, and then you can fill that form out and turn it in.
I'm good for that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to, uh, twenty eighteen, two ninety-two, conduct a public hearing regarding the proposed fiscal year, twenty eighteen, two, twenty nineteen's tax rate, and schedule and announce the date, time, and place of the meeting to adopt the tax rate. And I do have three, oh, go ahead.
And just to introduce the item again, um, and as the mayor said, that we do need to, um, discuss the rate. You don't vote on the tax rate at this point, um, but we do need to have the public hearing and announce the date and time and place of the meeting to actually adopt the tax rate. That is currently set for Tuesday, September eleventh, twenty eighteen, which is a regular council meeting here at this location. And you have a copy of the legal notice that has been posted in the local mirror, and it's currently on our city's website. Um, I won't read the tax rates again, they're the same as those that I mentioned before. However, this does also include besides our proposed tax rate that we've mentioned, we've had for several years. It also does include the effective tax rate, and it is point six eight two six eight zero per hundred, and the rollback tax rate, which is point seven oh eight six four four. Had the city tax rate, proposed tax rate, been above the rollback rate, then it would have, uh, triggered some additional, um, activities, but it is under that, so, um, again, this is the proposal that we have, that we have embedded in our budget that we just talked about. And with that, I'll just answer any questions if anyone has, like your open public hearing.
I, I do, I mean, we have another hearing, uh, on the fourth?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be a public hearing.
Yes, we do have another public hearing, yes. This is just the first of two.
September the fourth at six o'clock.
Yes, I should tell you that one too, yes, it's September fourth.
And council, keep in mind, just for those of you that this is your first time, um, you're voting on September eleventh, for the, uh, ordinance that comes before you does require from the vote of sixty percent of the members of the city council in order for that tax rate to pass. You do not have sixty percent, uh, from the votes, um, for that to pass. Um, and if fails, then the tax rate would need to be the lower of the effective rate, um, for, for this tax year or the, uh, tax rate for this past year.
Sixty percent would be five votes.
And I guess, um, I have heard there's been some discussion, so I'll add another comment, there's been some discussion, I think, in the community about the order in which the items are done. Um, I would like to point out that these are presented and approved in the order that they're required by our Texas Local Government Code. So the budget is approved first, and then the tax rate. And to just remember that the budget is based on the tax rate, so there is a relationship between the two, and I just wanted to remind everyone of that.
It's state law.
Yes, it's state law.
What would happen, could I ask a quick question, but what would happen if we voted for the budget and it didn't get sixty percent for the, uh, tax rate?
Well, then we would likely, and Chris can, can chime in on this, but we would likely have to go back and, um, scrub through the budget and find things to reduce it to be able to cover the expenses one way or another.
Yeah, from, from my standpoint as a city manager, I would probably put a halt to certain, I mean, just, to have the understanding that we would be, um, you know, coming up short, and not maybe only short for one year, but it has ripple effect, um, you know, over multiple years. So, uh, certainly things like personnel decisions would be the biggest thing. I mean, it's just one thing to go buy a vehicle, you have a one-time expense, and that expense doesn't occur the following year, but when you embed, uh, a lot of personnel costs that are gonna continue to recur, uh, we would want to, um, make sure that we, we didn't cause a, an issue for, of multiple year budgets that we would have to dig ourselves out.
Chris, wouldn't that be kinda like it was when we get back in oh eight, seven and eight, when the recession hit? We start to save up program for new, new equipment, start saving?
Yeah, we, we, you know, of course, no sound, we had no new, no new people, we were cutting, you know, we, uh, through attrition, we did rehire, you know, some of those sort of things, but, um, you know, starting trying to, we, we, because this is, obviously, we're, we're taking one vote at one period of time, but, you know, obviously, these are multiple year plans and things that we have in place, so I don't wanna, uh, we would just not wanna find ourselves in that situation where if the budget got passed, tax rate was not enabled to support that budget, that we would just blindly go forth and. that we would just blindly go forth and just, you know, we'll start down that path. We want to hit the pause button a little bit and make sure that we can afford what we, based on what we're getting. So we wouldn't have to go back for the secondary budget? Actually, I think by the law, you have to go, you actually, you have to come back and ratify the new tax rate based on the way I read the...
There was five, you have, you have five days to come back. If you don't reach, if you don't get that, that consensus, and it doesn't pass sixty percent, you have five days and then come back and ratify whichever of those two rates. And it's really, it's really to your benefit to have that discussion now, what that rate's going to be, so they can propose a budget that will meet that rate, so we don't get into a situation where we're having to...
And there, there's a lot of things that the voters will put, the voters will put out. We can't scrap those, we can put them off for years to come, or a year, or two years, or whatever.
Which is what happened after the two thousand and six election, that's why we got criticism from us and they backed us quickly. So, basically that kind of scenario. I like to look at it to keep yourself in an artificial reception a little bit. That's just my comment. But, do you mind? I'll be glad to answer your question.
Any other questions, company? This is a public hearing, I do have three speakers. Tiffany?
Hi there, my name's Tiffany Kara, I live at seventeen twenty one Swet Drive. So I am in opposition to the tax rate for a couple reasons. One was the budget part said that we were bringing in additional four point seven...
Can I interrupt you? Public speaker, three minutes.
Oh, that's all right. Uh, got it. The budget part says that we had, we were bringing in additional four point seven million dollars on, due to annexed property. But since I've lived in Midlothian, my property values every time are going up around thirty percent. And because I'm homesteaded, it is capped at ten percent for that year, but I'm still getting that rise every year. And I don't see that being taken into account, whether it is or not. I feel like you're taking on more people, but you're not, what are we offering additional? Are we going to move out more sewer services to them because we took them on? Because we're bringing in a whole lot of money, um, are you guys offering me anything more because of it?
Well, part of that budget that we were talking about are additional firefighters, animal control, different things that you have to hire those people to cover that area.
Right, I, I did see some of that. But I'm also looking at some of our surrounding cities and their tax rates. It looks like of our surrounding cities, we are down with Mansfield, but Waukesha, G, Riddo, some of those, they're lower, they're lower for the I S D and the municipals, according to Dave Downs dot com and some other websites from vision twenty seven.
And one thing I, I will say, the I S D rate we have...
I know you have no, that's not the point, but as a homeowner, that all still boils down. But as a homeowner, that still boils down, but the I S D and the municipal rates are two line items that I see right next to each other, they come to my big tax bill.
Those are the biggest ones, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, I just don't see, I have another point too. I just don't see a reason why we can't lower the tax rate at least a little bit, if not for the fact that we're bringing in so many more dollars and offering not really many more services other than to cover those people that we just brought in.
The average, the average adblock value right now, I think, in Midlothian, just round numbers, Chris, correctly, that's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If we lowered the tax rate one cent, that'd be twenty-five dollars a year.
That's a good start.
Yeah, this is a good start. I, I will address why maybe Waukesha's might be lower. We're much more growing cities in Waukesha, they are basically all built out. Your infrastructure industry, your three-wheel built out, and we're in the process of trying to do that. So I, I've always shy away from trying to compare one city with the others, we're different. Every city is different and the needs and the wants of the community are different. Things that people want, and we're in the need of better streets. So those dollars have to be increased and they do help everybody. It's not just those people that are new to the city, who are through buying a new home here or through annexation yet, so for three years, we've been putting on more personnel to help serve that area. But I don't see, ever see a correlation, taxes going up and need we're getting more. I mean, the community gets more because of the tax dollars are being able to spend in a lot of different ways. We don't spend tax dollars on sewer lines, that's water and sewer rates and those type of things. So maybe that is the, the growth of, of...
What I'm getting at though is, as a city, if I look at Mansfield or I look at Riddo, not just their, not just their taxes, but I see libraries, public libraries that are freestanding. I see recreation facilities that are freestanding, that are keeping our kids off the street, doing all this stuff that's terr, that's costing more money from our police and fire because they're tearing something up or something else. All these other things that we're not offering, that's why I'm saying, we're paying them more money, but are we offering more services?
Can I ask you a question? How long have you lived here?
So I have, I have lived here...
I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
I've lived here for four years, my husband's lived here on and off since nineteen ninety-one.
We have added a lot of services. When we get the number of people, seventy-plus thousand people, like Mansfield has, we'll be able to offer more. And we do spend our money in, in the, like, fourteen, the fourteenth street that we're putting in, that was a request from the people on the south side that, that, uh, you know, they wanted more roads, they wanted the convenience of those roads and we need them. I mean, you know, but that road is about a million dollars a mile.
I understand.
And, and we're putting, uh, Ledstone or Plainview all the way up to Mount Zion. I think that's going to start fairly soon. And, and we base that, could we lower the taxes? You asked that question first, yes we could. But we chose not to so that we could provide the services that citizens have requested.
Well, it's not quite the one where we were underspent was where I was also, unless I was reading it wrong, there were a few lines where we were underspent based on our estimate from the year before to the, to what we actually spent. And then this year, we budgeted again to be where we, to be at, or what our estimate was the year before, even though we were underspent. That's why I'm asking that.
And I think a lot of that, you're probably looking at personnel line items, I mean...
It's the bottom line.
A lot of that just deal with personnel until you, you know, especially when you look at fire and police service. We put on, like last year, we put on six new firefighters to staff station three. The budget was approved in September, there's no way we could have six new people on October one. By the time we got them, that had been through the process, but remember, they start January one. We got three months of savings of six people. If we ever have turnover and it takes a little time, you know, this thing happens. But that does, it's not always the case. So if we, some, some saving, not all of it, I'm not saying every month, but a lot of saves will be, you know, turnover or in the delayed hiring, because it takes a long time, especially in fire police, to get somebody on. The bad part is, is if you, if you start budgeting for turnover and you don't have it, where do we get the money to pay the people? So typically in government, we budget for that person, assuming that they're going to be there for the whole year. And, and we saw that, but if you go back and look at eight, nine, ten, eleven, all the way through to eleven, twelve, twelve, you'll see very tight margins where we didn't have turnover, we didn't have new positions, and we didn't have any built-in savings. And those numbers were a lot tighter, so I think that's probably why in recent times, with all the additions of personnel, you do see some, some gaps in that the following year when those people are on full time, you pay their salary the entire year. And that's just one particular line item that I'm talking about, is salaries, there's, there's, there's other things in the way the budget starts, just the salary.
And I realize this is a hard process, this isn't, I'm not trying to slight you guys, any, any of you guys can say that you're trying to hit us when we're down or anything, but I am saying that property ta, property values are going up and the, and significantly going up. And I'm at that county, that county office every year fighting them. And I need a little bit of a reduction back to what it should be, but I don't know that, I mean, property values are going up and the taxes just keep going up at that percentage every year. So you're not raising the tax rate, but they're going up.
I think we're all seeing that, it's, it's not...
Oh, I know.
I think actually the state of Texas is seeing that. And in Midlothian, obviously, I'm, we're experiencing it, in our home, we're retired, and yet I understand that issue. One of the things that, I mean, you know, I work for the city, so we're talking about rec centers or those type of things, that councils throughout the years have held off on doing amenities because we needed the basics, the, the streets. All of that had to be in place before you, I mean, we have a library, we're very thrilled that we have the joint library that we do with M I S D. So we have a swimming pool and all of those things, was those amenities that we couldn't, councils decided, no, we have to have the, the basics first before you can start putting in that type of thing, which is more of a, once you get to a level where you've got a lot more money coming in and you're already built out, have all your streets, have all the places by the name, and then those kind of funds can be used. Or you figure out through your sales tax monies where those can be funded back. That's just my take on it, from hears of service from different councils, that what was important to begin with, and I had two boys that went through this system, is there's nothing to do in this town. And I understand exactly, there's nothing to do in this town. But hopefully, a, an independent, not the city has to provide that. Maybe there's somebody that wants to put in a moving deck or a swimming pool or whatever, but it not have to come out of government. The school district and the city have discussed the need for a swimming pool or, you know, that type, an auditorium type thing. But neither one of us can afford it independently, but maybe one day we can actually...
We could, we could float a bond, you know, have a bond election and build it, but it's the staffing and operating of it, would be the overhead, it's a recurring cost every year. And I know, like, several years ago, Lancaster had a real good swim facility. And, and their operating budget for that, for that facility, just staffing it and offering it, was like seven hundred thousand dollars a year.
That's about what Duncan Mills is, I looked into it.
Yeah, seven hundred thousand a year. And that's, that's, we have, you know, we've opted not to do that because, yeah, we could have a bond election, like we've added on to the park or, you know, the fire station and things like that. And that, that's a one-time expense, but it's the operating part of it is where the, is, is the...
Like I said, I'm not, I'm not trying to say that you guys are out to get us or anything, but I am trying to plant that seed that you're going to get more money even if you lower the tax rate a little bit, because, just because of property taxes that are going up.
Did you start on the bond committee?
I wasn't, um, I wasn't asked to be on the bond committee, I was asked to help promote the bond, but I wasn't asked to be on the bond committee.
Okay. Well, I just want to kind of tell you, one of the reasons that I, right now, I support the seventy cents is during that process, the staff looked at how many years it would take to issue all the debt, if they were all approved or not. And the process was that you leveraged between the operating and the debt rate, because your debt sometimes, if you're issuing, could actually rise above the money you have for your operating. Right now, we're kind of like this, we've got thirty-eight cents that operates the whole city. Every budget that's, that services that are being provided through the operation fund is thirty-eight cents. But if, when that interest rate goes up, then it means that we may not be able to issue debt, so it goes out years, that go back out to get more money, to finish the part and those type of things. So staff was the one that kind of said that the spreadsheets that were handed out was based on the seventy cents stated, and that's the reason we went public with them. And the council bought all of that. So if we, if we lower them, we probably could, but it could be that those bond projects that were approved by the voters would go out further. We took a lot of heat the last time that we didn't issue that debt. So, I mean, in my mind, it's like, okay, you know, I, I'd like to see those bond dollars being able to issue quicker and we could get those bond projects done. And so that, that's kind of my thinking going into the budget.
All right, well, I appreciate it, sure, thanks.
Thank you.
Rick Orr?
And as you might guess, he has said in opposition.
Yes.
Name and address, please.
My name's Rick Orr, I live at forty twenty-one, Longwood, Longwood, Miami. And...
I'm sorry, could you pull your mic up so everybody can hear you?
Sorry, being short.
So I am in opposition to, to this additional budget. As she stated, y'all have taken in quite a bit of money by taking those of us in that have been annexed. Contrary to my wishes, I might add, and so, you know, you're taking in quite a bit of money, you could go ahead and reduce taxes. And I noticed yesterday in the newspaper, city governments in New York, Texas are reaping benefits from rising property values. As they unveiled their twenty nineteen budgets, about half of the region's biggest cities plan to adopt lower tax rates. But those cuts are underwhelming compared with the rising revenues collected because of skyrocketing property values. So, I mean, if, if other cities are able to lower their tax rates and y'all just took in all the money that you're taking in by those of us that are being annexed, and I might add, I don't see any services. And I live off Fourteenth Street, and I was not one of the people that ever asked for y'all to build anything out there, especially not a million-dollar mile to provide any, any travel out there. I guarantee you who did is all the developers that are building subdivisions out there.
No, they, that was approved by registered voters in the city.
Okay, so...
I don't know who they were, but I mean, they just count the numbers of the people.
So that, that Fourteenth Street area was in the city of the people that lived along that Fourteenth Street?
Yeah, it was.
That was already in the city?
We couldn't build it if it... It has to be in the city or we'd...
Anyway, it's not something that I wanted to, I just wanted to state my opposition to y'all raising the tax rate.
The only thing I'll add to you, when you have a growing city, you have infrastructure, streets and sewer and, and different things like that, it just costs, it's a decision that we make and like I said before, we could lower the taxes, but it's going to make the services that people have told us that they want, it's going to take longer to get them.
Well, I'd recommend that you stop annexing areas so you don't have to provide us additional services.
I think, I think we have.
Thanks.
Hey, I need to, I need to make it clear to everybody out here, we have not raised taxes. We have got the same tax rate that we've had several years now.
But we're too high back in there. We haven't raised the tax rate, but because of increased property values, people's taxes are...
But we're, we're talking tax rate, we're, we're going on now.
Please clarify, it wasn't us to raise the assessment.
No, no, I, sure, it's the county, sure.
Okay, excuse me, Robert Shelton. And he also is in opposition.
How'd you guess? Robert Shelton, thirty-four fifty, Center Road. Yeah, four of you were, one was responsible for forcing us into that annexation. And I was on the annexation committee and we talked about how the tax, I mean, the city property tax was going to be a hardship on a lot of people immediately.
city property tax was gonna be a hardship on a lot of people immediately. And I, we had asked in the negotiation about trying to do it like a two or three year thing where we could budget up to it. And we were told that there's no way, that wouldn't be fair to everybody else.
It's against the state law.
Okay, so now you do have the opportunity and you can lower the taxes to help, uh, those that were, uh, annexed. And, uh, earlier you were talking about the senior exemption. I'm seventy years old and I wish I could get that exemption, but I can't because I have the disability with the county. I went to appraisal office. They told me to come talk to the city. I came and talked to, Anne, is that your name? Anne McRoberts, I think was his name. And they said they would look into it. Couple days later, I get a call back from Anne says, no, we can't change it because the appraisal office had said if they was a senior or senior and disabled, that they would be able to get the exemption. So I'm not able to get the, the senior exemption because I have a disability.
We joined the seventy, we joined the seventy thousand, we joined the seventy thousand exemption.
Yes, I can't get that. You can only have one or the other. And if I give up my, uh, disabled rate that's supposed in two thousand and seventy, my taxes are gonna go three or four thousand dollars. And, uh, so the city says, it's the appraisal office, appraisal office says it's the city. I talked to the county, the county says, we don't know who it is. So I'd like some direction on who I need to talk to.
Actually, it's, it's just written in state law that you can't have both the senior and the disability exemption. So there's, it really says, how do all of our hands, I mean, I wish, I wish we could.
Somebody can change it and I'd like to know who it is so I can go.
The state legislature, state legislature.
But I'm not asking for both. I'm, I, I have the disability with the county. All I, I'm asking the city. I'm not asking the county to give me both. I'm not asking the city to give me both.
I called the state rep, John Ray, who covers our area and talked to him about it because that's where that has to be changed.
The state said we can't do that.
Yeah, and I understand what you're saying. And you make a point, you're talking about two different taxing jurisdictions, but the law states that you can only have one type of exemption on, on a particular property regardless of cross jurisdiction, you know, cross taxing jurisdictions. It doesn't say that. It just says on one particular property. So your particular property, either choose the senior or choose the disabled, irregardless of what taxing jurisdiction it is. I wish we could, we, we spent a lot of time looking at your case. We made, we made every effort we could to provide an answer. We were hopeful that we could get you, um, what, what you were requesting exemption. But right now, the state law the way it is, we cannot accommodate.
Mr. Ray is my advocate.
The state legislature needs to change that provision, uh, in order for.
You and everybody else.
For you and everybody else that's in that situation.
Why, I'm sure I'm not the only one. Right, no. Okay, back to the, the, the tax rate. You're saying that four million dollars come from the people that was annexed and we were told in that annex, not all of it, a portion of it, okay? And, uh, so we were told in the, in the negotiating that you guys will probably never, we'll say at least a minimum, fifteen years before you get sewer. So you're probably never gonna get sewer, okay? So then you're just saying that the infrastructure, all the new houses, that why give them sewer? Why should they get sewer if we can't get sewer? So you're saying one, one, one avenue is.
Pay for that. We'd have to, you know, we'd have to charge you a rate. And, and most people when we talk, when we're talking through annexation, when they found out they were gonna have to pay, you know, a sewer bill, they don't, they don't want any part of the sewer.
I understand. I, I brought that up because of, you know, we're saying, well, it's not fair if we can't do it for this group. Well, it should be for the whole, all the city, you know, not just certain ones can get certain, uh, um, services.
If you, you have septic now.
Yeah.
Your septic's in the back of your house.
Side of my house.
Side of your house. If we put sewer down the street in front of your house, you'd have to rewire or replon your lot to come to the sewer.
I would.
Well, you'd have to, if we do that, if we put it in there, you'd go be required to do it.
That's a requirement that when we extend sewer to an area, you have a certain time period where you have to tie on to it. That's like, that's another reason why, cause most people in the annexation area don't want us to extend sewer in front of their house cause then our requirements would have to tie on.
I've been in, I've been in town in City Limits for twenty-two years on seventy. And, uh, I, early on, I, wouldn't it be great if we had, uh, septic or sewer to come through? And I heard that, uh, there's not only a monthly fee, but a tie-in fee that's mandatory. I said, nah, that's okay. I'm happy. That's okay.
I live in Rose, but my, my sewer bill is, is over a hundred dollars a month.
Oh, that makes me happy.
So you don't want to pay then?
Yeah.
I pay it.
But anyway, you were not able to, uh, help us when we were annexed on our tax deal for an instant, but you can lower it and help us.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, Paul Cunningham.
Your name's Paul Cunningham. Uh, I'm a resident of the city, but I'm a police officer. I don't feel comfortable with my address in public.
We understand.
I, uh, have lived in Midlothian for, since two thousand and six. And several years ago, my family and I made the decision to move out into the county. After we moved into the county, we were notified that we were going to be annexed, I mean, January first that happened. And I'm kind of curious as to what benefit my family has received from our tax rates going on. I've not seen one police officer. I've not seen one firefighter in my neighborhood outside of myself and my neighbors. I saw the sheriff before I was in the city. Uh, you say you've been hiring police officers and firefighters for three years? That's curious to me as a field training officer myself and an academy instructor. I understand it takes about a year to field a new officer, but y'all took out bonds last year and, and several years before, if I'm not mistaken. I would expect that if y'all are expecting to get twenty-two percent more revenue, that would indicate to me that y'all are expecting to get between fourteen and twenty-two percent more people, just a rough estimate. Maybe I'm wrong. But I would expect to see increases in police and fire that would correspond to that. And I haven't seen anything.
Sorry, you haven't seen it. If you look at our budget documents, like last year, we added six firemen. We added four or five police officers. We've got, uh, I wanna say thirteen.
They're not in my neighborhood, sir.
I don't, and they're not going, I mean, I promise you, there's no neighborhood in the city where, um, where we're gonna have, you know, full-time police officers.
I saw them in Rose, but.
Um, we, they patrol the entire city, which is sixty square miles and, um, that's all we can do. We, we will not, I can promise it in front of the entire audience, we, we will not have a police officer in every single subdivision.
And I'm not asking for that.
And they will, but they will travel through. They will be in that region of town. Um, it's just that they're, they're patrolled all over.
So where, where do you live? I'm in what area?
I, I live, uh, in the area that's going to be affected by ledge stone being extended.
Okay.
And I'm against that as well. That's going to bring nothing but crime into my neighborhood. Which is gonna bring violence into the city. I would expect to see more police in the area due to that, but let's assume we add out more police officers and more firefighters. That's what, one service that I should expect from the city. What other services?
I forgot the number exactly, but like Chris said, they're, they're there. Uh, what, five or six years ago, we had twenty-two police officers and I think we have plus sixty now.
You can go, you can go to presently, uh, Todd, we haven't finalized this one. You can look at the, uh, head counts. Page seventeen and page eighteen, uh, last year's budget. In fact, I, I would recommend every citizen reading the first ten or fifteen pages of, of last year's budget. It's an overview of the city, head counts, two point nine seven people per household, average size house income, et cetera, et cetera. Great statistic, great information. It's all, it's all public.
Thank you. And I think, you know, you ask about services and not everybody's gonna utilize every service we provide. Obviously, uh, as you've heard here, we're building roadways, building new fire stations, building community parks, upgrading our parks. Uh, not everybody takes advantage of every service that the city provides, but we do provide all of the services.
I understand both what have I gained with my tax dollars that I didn't have before with the county? I, I would expect there's some kind of transaction.
A quicker response on your police officers, cause they're responding from a neighborhood adjacent to you or within Midlothian where the sheriff's department may have been responding from Anis or Italy or somewhere else.
I have on average between a seven and a fifteen minute response time, which is average for the county on a non-emergency call.
I think averages is about four.
And that's great. I'm perfectly good with seven to fifteen minutes for a random identity report or dangerous dollar report.
What if it was an anger?
And, and sir, this is also out in the public on the website. This is also what we're talking about.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and last year, uh, the, uh, budget for payroll in just parties was three million dollars. Um, we adopted a plan for this year of three point nine million. And we're proposing this year's, uh, budget in payroll alone, four point four million.
Yes, sir.
So it's spread out. You may not see him at twelve at midnight driving by your house. But there is a substantial ramp up in the police force and I am a strong proponent of that. The more we can get visibility out in the streets, in the retail stores, uh, it's a better off than all that.
And I, I'm, as a police officer, I'm a big proponent in police being proactive and stopping crime. To answer your question, sir, the city of Dallas has about a fifteen minute response rate on an ambulance, uh, which is pretty typical. And within that golden hour, it allows them to, uh, respond to a hospital.
Fifty, a fifty minute response on ambulance?
Yes, if I call for an ambulance while I'm on duty, it takes fifteen minutes or less.
What's our response rate here?
I don't know.
Change.
Five minutes. Nine minutes to hold your breath a long time.
Yeah, I agree. Excellent, but what, what do I gain? I mean, I, I gain a quicker response time, but I've got everything that the police are gonna bring. I've got a nurse down the road. I, I didn't need the city. The city apparently needed me. And I would like to know what I'm gaining by it. That's never been a quick answer.
You probably never will.
I can give you my perspective. We've been here twenty-two years, entire time in the city. We moved to Arlington when I first graduated high school.
Yes.
I've never had a child in, in, uh, the school system either. So I've always paid city taxes. I've always paid school taxes. My belief is it's not about me, it's about the bigger advantages that my taxes can go towards Baxter Elementary or the new middle school and the city taxes go for infrastructure. Or the extra police that I would love to see on my street, making sure that my wife's safe and I'm out of town. And I, I don't look at it as what, what's in it for me. I look at it as what's in it for us. I gladly pay my portion of that, that's just me.
And, and I, I appreciate that point of view, but I voted with my bullet to move out of the city. And I was brought back in. And I moved to an area where developers could in roads. Uh, where if I bought gas, I was paying the road tax. Um, and I just haven't gotten anything. It, it doesn't sound like y'all have an answer for that. So, uh, thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your service.
Oh, Cam, Cameron Curtis. He was a, was he a speaker? Non-speaker. No, he was a non-speaker.
Unless you want to hear from me.
If you want to hear from you, we want to hear from you.
Yeah. So, okay. That's all the public speakers I have. Do you have a motion?
No action.
No action.
No action.
It's closed, open area.
Can I make a comment though?
Sure.
First of all, I am beyond ecstatic with the fact that, uh, we're looking at very positively about repairing the ceiling on the, uh, the elderly. Knowing that, uh, people are not gonna be taxed out of their homes if they spent here a long time is, is, is warden itself, being part of this routine. Um, I'm, I'm the new guy. I've only been here two months and two days. And this budget process has been going on since months and months ago, probably January and February, I think I saw the outline if it began. I hadn't even decided to run yet when you all were working on this budget. But in reality, the budget started back in the fall when we started, uh, promoting and, uh, trying to roll out the bond package. And the bond package, we were receiving literature, this is, this is a perspective, not trying to change anybody's opinion. It's just another book of the same issue.
Can you hear me?
I'm trying to talk a little louder. I'll pull that, it's already as far as it goes. Uh, we were receiving literature talking about, uh, the, uh, bonds equal no new taxes. And the fire departments go share impact on Midlothian families, no new taxes. It didn't say you'll pay taxes if your appraisal goes up, and that will be different. It just said no new taxes. So, the inference of that should be seen different ways. If we were to say, how do we, uh, honor the letter of the statement, no new taxes? By definition, getting the same tax rate on the same property, the same, excuse me, the same tax dollars on the same property this year over last year is by definition the effective tax rate. So there could be a discussion or a possibility that to, to honor the statement, no new taxes, we could look at the effective tax rate. And that's two and a half cents. Every cent is three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars taken out of the budget. We're looking at taking a million dollars out of the budget for two and a half cents. That's a hundred thousand is seventy-five, eighty dollars, uh, average home, maybe two hundred dollars a year on, of average home. But it is a statement of these bonds were presented as no new taxes. So I'll only reflect that.
I would say that, uh, since the information that went out to the voters only represented what the city can do. And the city was saying that none of the taxes, we weren't gonna increase taxes, we thought anything. We cannot guarantee what the appraisal district is gonna do on any home. And I don't know that every home got an increase. I mean, so I, I think maybe the, the wording on that is not, I mean, you can read it the way you want to and obviously you read it that way. But, um, we can only do as a council what the city can do to be a place of this.
And I'm not, uh, I'm not here to try to talk you differently. I just wanted to say that is a perspective that's out there.
And I understand, uh, with that, um, discussion about one point two million, um, there would have to be a proposal put out by somebody, which I have not heard anything throughout the budget process. Uh, well, we don't want to provide that service. The reason I say service, we're a service organization. So anything we take out of the budget is a decrease in service. And so far, I haven't heard any, anything that says, let's take this out, scale it back, whatever, where we can even have a discussion, haven't had that discussion. So that, that to me is kind of concerning at this point because we have never had that discussion until now.
Well, and I, I would say we, we will welcome that direction. That's the consensus of council, that we are looking to lower the rate, whether it's one cent or two and a half cents. Please let us know that so that we can go back and I need to, because it's ultimately my, um, job to present to you a budget that is indicative of the tax rate that we're going to adopt. So I would ask that if, if that is the will, then we need to know preferably tonight so that we can start our review of what we are gonna propose to cut. You know, if there's no specific cut. You know, if there's no specific cuts, as Councilmember McClure stated, if there's no specific cuts, then it's gonna be coming upon myself and staff to come back with what those recommended cuts are in the budget that we proposed. Because we did move forward with this budget as has been presented multiple times with, with that same tax rate. So we, if we can, we would need to know that tonight, that we need to start looking at what we're gonna cut out now. Unfortunately, as we presented it with the bond package passing, we went down this, this plan. We had a multi-year plan. Some of that got kicked into effect at our last council meeting when we issued the bonds. We can't take that back, too. So we've got that decision passed us already because that was our plan that we had laid out. We can go back now and it's going to be, it's gonna be cutting those operational pieces out of the budget in order to get to whatever number we're looking for. So if we have a consensus council that we're looking to do that, please let us know and we'll start working on that.
Is it cutting things out or is it slowing the pace at which we do things?
Just, well, and I'm not saying cutting out. We're cutting out some of the proposal that we made. So like, you know, that supplemental list taken from, you know, there's police, fire, administrative, dispatchers, et cetera. We're gonna need to pare that list down. And I'll tell you that most likely you will pare down the personnel side of it because those are the ongoing costs. And if we're gonna lower the tax rate, that means less money this year, less money next year, et cetera. We slow down the pace, we're gonna need to pull those positions back on these recurring costs. It's a, because it doesn't do me much good just to pull a one-time cost out of there, but I've got all these recurring costs next year. So, but that's what we need to go back and look at. I'm not trying to tell you specifically what we would look to cut, but I can almost promise you that some point it's got to be proposed positions in order to make the long-term plan, not this year, the long-term plan work. So, I'd be annoyed.
And we work on basically a five-year plan, and we adjust to move up every year. And always, in any kind of business, whether it's a city or whatever, the highest expense that you have is salaries. They're always, so.
Salaries and benefits.
Yeah. Can, can you tell us again, I think you stated in budget workshop, what percent of the budget is personnel? Eighty percent?
Probably in the seventy-five, eighty percent. I don't have the exact number.
All the other stuff is to buy them their tools to do their job is basically the rest of it. So eighty percent in salary. Obviously, I agree with Chris. I've been there as a finance director where you, if you're gonna scale back, it's personnel. You want, you want hire.
What if you didn't scale back, but you lowered your hundred eighty days, what happens?
That's our bond rate.
And the fact interest you pay on bonds.
Well, and let me try to address another issue. I, we certainly have the money to do it this year. So let's say we didn't change the budget at all. We just said, we're just gonna absorb the million dollars this year and find out. The problem is next year, the year after that, the year after that. It will certainly change. I'm just saying it will change our long-term plans as far as the future bond issuances. We'll probably, and we need to run these figures if that's the council's will. But most likely what you would see is if you adopted, you said, staff, y'all can do everything that's in this budget, but cut the tax rate to do it. Yes, we reduce fund balance this year. We are likely going to have to scale back bond issuances next year because we're just not gonna be able to afford to do, obviously. I mean, it makes sense. We cannot do the plan that we laid out with a million dollars less a year. Over time, that, the fund balance can only sustain so long before it's gone. Or we get down to that, whatever it's a hundred and fifty, a hundred and twenty, ninety, whatever the number gets down to. It's only gonna last so long. So we'll, we'll just have to change our plan. I'm not saying we can't do it. We just have to modify the plan that we have laid out.
We take taxes in O eight, when there's a session here, and then came back, I don't know, what year, maybe ten, fourteen, and raise the taxes back up. Have we raised them back up more than we cut them to make up the difference of what we lost in that interim period of time when we had them lowered?
So funding ongoing services, you never want to do that out of your fund balance. Somewhere you're gonna run out of fund balance. And we've seen a lot of entities that tried that. They're going ahead and doing the services and then they got into trouble and they.
But we are in that growth mode, which helps us. That's part of it.
But don't you set the rate every year?
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
I would commend the staff on putting together this budget without an increase in our tax rate. We've had the same tax rate for several years, and I think it's, I think it's very prudent for them to put together a budget to be able to continue with the same tax rate. I realize the county's running prompty taxes, and I, I, my prompty tax went up like everybody else's. But also the value of my prompting. If I wanted to sell it today, I'd get a lot more money for it than I did last year because of that trade law. So I'm, I'm having to pay more money, but I'm, I've got a better value to deal with. And so I think, I think, I think the staff did a fantastic job of the budget, and I think it's good.
You're saying tax assessment value correlates to market value? Because it doesn't.
I'm sorry. This is not, this portion of this meeting is over, you know, so we can't take comments from the audience.
All right. Thank you.
Well, what we need now is a, are we gonna adopt this tax rate?
We don't, we don't, we don't adopt it now, do we?
No, no. We're just telling Chris if he needs to adjust his paperwork. So we have a consensus to stay at the same?
Yes.
Mike?
I, I would still like to at least explore it a little bit. I just.
Well, we still have another question.
I have a hard.
Right now, let's just do this one. So.
Oh, I'm, what are you asking?
It's not a vote. It's just a consensus.
As of right now, I.
Because that's what Chris needs.
I'm not gonna make any decisions to move forward on this tax rate until I feel like it's been exhausted.
So we have one, two, and I say yes, believe it for saying.
I'd say yes for Chris, yeah.
Okay.
I'd love to explore the effective rate.
Is there a way, is there a way?
This is not the final.
Yeah, exactly. We're gonna be next Tuesday night. Chris, is there a way?
But he needs to know what.
Here would be my question. Is there a way, Chris, that you could just, without getting down into the nickels and dimes, to give us a fair understanding of if it were a million dollar cut, which would be the effective rate versus the present tax rate, what would you be looking at? Would it be a million out of police or a hundred thousand here, a hundred thousand there?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be multi, it's gonna be multifaceted.
Wait, is that possible to give us an understanding by next Tuesday?
We'll certainly work on it.
Well, I have to actually say, since, I mean, obviously, this is Chris's budget until he turned it over to us. So I would think maybe the council has, some councilmen now may have an idea of where they want to cut back or scale back. Maybe you give them your suggestions.
I'd be glad to work with you.
Well, anybody can make suggestions, Nick, you know, of where you want to cut back.
Didn't we already take four hundred thousand out for the fields? For the four big.
Yeah, we already had, but we already had, you know, used fund balance because it was a one-time cost. So we're still looking, you know, to look at the sheet. Still got eight hundred and forty-four use of fund balance already. I just get, we're looking at, generally, it's not the one-time cost that bothered me so much. It's the recurring every year cost, and that's what we really need to hone in on. Which we just, let's just say we cut the tax rate. We go back to this scenario. We cut the tax rate. We don't change a thing in the budget. That eight forty-four now goes just one point nine million, give or take. It's not sustainable very long with, especially when you tie up that many, you know, I think we had twelve or thirteen or more positions that we were proposing. Just don't think it's sustainable long-term. We need to go back and address that and start working. And we have to plug that new tax rate in for the next two, three, four, five years to see what that's gonna play out like. It's this year, it's next year, it's forever.
So if you lower it, when do you be willing to put it back up? So you take, yeah, we're gonna lower it, but you need to be able to say, how long you can stand to leave it lowered? Do you have to raise it back up or we?
There's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts. We have a hospital coming in. We have continued growth. We have expectations of continued sales tax and appreciation of the value of the property going up. There's a lot of moving parts. And I'm not in any way saying just cut off people, let's give severance packages. That's not what I'm talking about. But if we were tentatively looking at going twelve to fifteen headcounts, what would, what would the model look like if we were eight to ten additional headcounts? Those kind of.
And that's what I'm saying. We're not talking about going to cut people. They're currently on payroll.
I'll never.
Let's don't, yeah, don't, don't make that wrong. I'm talking about new positions that we propose. We would have to be going back instead of the twelve or thirteen. Maybe it's four or five.
But that was just proposed by all the departments. A fire chief comes and says, you know, in order to maintain that level of service, these are how many people I need, and the police chief.
Part of the rationale for adding firefighters last year was to reduce overtime costs.
But that manpower out, we'd love to have much of that.
And there's a, well, there's another reason. Isn't it state law that the vacation time goes up?
Yeah, with our, with our next census, we're gonna have mandatory increases of public safety vacation. So part of that was trying to get prepared for that when you have the mandatory increase in vacation that we will get in 2020, start staffing up for that.
But remember, in the police department, how many of those officers are SRO, which are not on staff?
Five of them, right.
So the only thing you can cut or take out would be those that were gonna be on streets.
But Chris, the question that I constantly have on my mind is how blessed we have been by the increased property values. Now, we continue to focus on that. We don't establish those values, and I understand that, but we benefit on the tax income, the tax revenue off of that value. So whatever in, in business experience, whatever goes up, goes down. We obviously, in some of the best economic times I've seen, I think the best economic times I've seen in my lifetime, including the early eighties when I remember that. So we're obviously living in a heightened property value. I wouldn't go as far as to say a bubble. But sooner or later, this thing's got positive. So my primary concern is that if we don't pull back off of this a little bit and give ourselves kind of a cushion, as I remember that we did back in, when we went up on taxes the last time, it was just so we could pay folks. A lot of that. But, but let me get to the core of my question. I often wonder what if property values hadn't gone up? Would have we still been able to assume the same budgets we have? Or would have we been going up on taxes all this time? And I would have wondered, what would the tax rate be had the property values not excelled at the increased levels that they had? What would the current tax rate be? So this is what I'm rolling through in my mind is, is it time to, in my view, nobody's talking about eliminating taxes, but to kind of balance things back out a little bit. I don't know the answers to that because I'm not a financial genius like the rest of you folks, but from a hillbilly point of view. Our budgets are based, you know, we don't, we're looking at a lot of calls for service. So as, as this community continues to, it's just gonna blow up with new development, et cetera. You know, our calls for service go up, our demands for service go up. That's what's driving, you know, a lot of our requests. It's not just, oh, the tax rate or the, the values are going up twenty percent, let's fill in the gap. A lot of that demand, if you look at the police and fire call, look at the rise in calls. And that's where their modeling comes from. You're right, back in recession, at some point, it's not, it's not, if, it's when we have a correction, we're not going up. And that's why, you know, I made the statement I did about, you know, we're lowering the tax rate now, not gonna build in a bunch of costs. We've seen it. We've already went through it in oh eight, nine, ten, eleven. We weren't adding anybody. And we were, through attrition and everything else, we've already lived through that. And we've learned through that, that we're not gonna, we're not gonna get so top-heavy that we can't sustain another downturn. And it will come. I have no doubt about that, that it will come. But I don't want, I don't, we're basing ours on, on the population increases and things that we're seeing to keep up with the demand for service. You know, if our numbers are too high, then we can certainly cut back and we'll just, we'll provide whatever level of service gets approved in this budget.
So placement doesn't show up at your answer in the conference?
Well, I.
I don't think, I think that's gonna happen.
No, I'm not concerned. But, but where I am concerned is when the values do finally come, we will be in a position to where we can absorb the gap, is what you're, I'm hearing from you. I don't know exactly how, but we're gonna be able to absorb the gap.
We'll, we'll do exactly what we had to do in oh eight, nine. And just like every other household and probably every other business that went through that recession and every other city, we, we cut and we deferred, you know, street maintenance when we had to cut all of that. We had to cut, you know, replacement of equipment. I mean, anything and everything we could do.
We cut out our Save-A-Program.
Tell her, say it. No salary increases. All of those things, through attrition, we let people go. We didn't replace. All of the things that, that we had to do in order to get through those times and, you know, and I'm not saying woe is me. Every individual did it. Every business did it across the country. And, and that's what we would do again when, and we'll have to again, when this correction takes place.
However, yeah, if you look at the years of correction that we went through, I mean, I worked here twenty-one years. And we never, we had a little bump, maybe a year or two, but nothing like oh eight to just now. So whether it's gonna be that, I mean, I don't know that anybody knows that answer. Lord knows that, but.
Do you have an answer, Muffer?
Yeah.
And then, the Save-A-Program, in case anybody had a question, that, what we decided to do was we bought four new, a ladder truck and three new bumper trucks because our trucks were older. And rather than have to do a bond to buy those trucks and stretch it out, we put money aside so when we need a new truck or we need a new ambulance, we have the money to buy it. We don't have to, to raise taxes or get another bond. We have the money. And that's why we've been doing that for, I don't know, several years. We try to spend your money, right? You know.
We ended up several years and then, then the bomb hit, and that one was got cut off. And that put us behind, and that's where we had to go buy the extra truck for the bomb. We didn't have the money that we'd been putting up because it was used for other things that had to be done. And I see the budget that we're going right now will go in so we'll have the capabilities of continuing that. Save-A-Program. When it does happen, I, I'm just, I'm concerned about cutting it for, there's so many, so many reasons. Of course, I, of course, I was first like that.
Wayne, what are you saying? We, we, we drop the Save-A-Program, put a set of jumper cables in every ambulance or?
I guess so.
We're not jumping at that.
No. No, I think, I think we've got to go with.
I don't know that we can be clear, right?
Yeah, we'll, we'll continue to work on it.
Just do what, do what Art suggested and, and.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine.
I want you, I want you to work back. They still have six.
All right. Now, there's no action on that, so we will now move to, nobody else has any questions.
Are we gonna close the public hearing?
I thought we did. It was, okay. Do you have a motion to close the public hearing on twenty eighteen? Okay, I have a motion. Uh, recorded votes, please. And it is closed. Now we'll move into the regular agenda. Twenty eighteen, two ninety-three, consider an act upon a resolution, reapproach. Twenty eighteen, two ninety-three, consider an act upon a resolution reappointing certain directors of Midlothian Municipal Management District Number Two.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is simply to reappoint members to the municipal management district. This municipal management district is for the Diamond Jay Ranch. We have three of the initial directors, that their term expired this year, and we're looking to reappoint those same three members back to the board. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
I have a motion approved in a second. Record your votes, please. And it does pass seven to zero. We'll move to twenty eighteen, two ninety-four, consider an act upon an ordinance amending the code of ordinances by amending chapter one, general provisions by amending article one point zero eight, parks recreation by adding new subsection, dog park related rules to include requirements for the Midlothian Dog Park.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a proposal today, tonight, to make the amendment to the ordinances. These have been researched by both myself and William of Legal Council, we've taken some samples from other cities. We've also taken this to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. That was on their meeting of August thirteenth. They voted to recommend approval to the city council. I have to go over any details of the ordinances. In general, it's a new set of rules that will apply to an off-leash dog park, which, as it is right now, if you have a dog in the park, it has to be on a leash. Clearly, we wanna make that a little bit different in the dog park.
Are we gonna post these somewhere in the actual park?
Yes.
So it'll be visible?
We'll, we'll have it posted at least two places. I wanted, just as you enter, another inside.
The only two I didn't know if it was just standard or unique to us was number C, no person shall allow a child under their supervision to run with or chase a dog. I knew that in my backyard with my own dogs, so I didn't know, is that, is that unique?
Well, the issue is them not running with your dog, but running with someone else's dog. We just wanna try and avoid any opportunity for a child to be injured, even not by an aggressive dog, or even a large dog might jump on a small child.
It is standard language. Parks are really for the dogs, they're not for children.
Got it, got it. And then the last one was, no person shall possess or use tobacco products in the dog park. Is that?
And that's standard free-for-him tobacco product.
Smoke-free environment.
In our parks.
Okay, all right.
I want you to go off. Subsections are privileged in a section. Record your votes, please. And as you pass seven to zero.
Thank you.
We'll move to item twenty eighteen, two ninety-five, consider an act upon the expenditure of funds for pavement resurfacing services on various roads within a regional town.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Before you, a product that we're looking at, it's an emulsion with an aggregate, and we're trying to extend the lives of our roads, the longevity, giving it a proper wearing surface. You know, kind of the idea here is to get more tools in our toolbox when it comes to road maintenance, and also give us a product that could, again, extend the life, but also do that at a cheaper cost. You know, so here, we're bringing twelve roads to you, there's an attached map of the areas that we're looking at. We are pre-planning that, we're looking at the roads that we don't have to cut again for water, utilities, or sewer. So we're, that basically, we're just gonna overlay these roads, extend the life of them, make it more exciting, pleasing in those areas, because some people feel, when you're out there crack ceiling roads, it doesn't look really good, but it works very well. The surfacing is longer. The product that we're looking at, the only reason why we're coming at a hundred thousand, we wanna look at this product, kinda test it, test the waters a little bit on some areas. And then the goal is, if it does work out well, and it gives us the promise that it makes, that we'll be coming back to you next year, and look at a lot more roads. And again, have more tools in the toolbox, extend the lives of our roads.
Yeah, we extend the life, we save a lot of money.
That's the plan, sir.
Motion for approval in a second. Record your votes, please. And it does pass seven to zero.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you.
We'll move to twenty eighteen, two ninety-six, received presentation from T. Neil and Perkins on the Midlothian Conference Center Regional Detention Facility.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, Council. As Council recall, back in January of twenty sixteen, at a workshop, Council, they had a presentation, we would discuss some stormwater quality, or some stormwater issues, but also...
Can I quick you mic up?
But also had, had, had looked at also some regional detention. And so at that time, Council had instructed staff to budget in the next few years. The studying of one was going to be looking at regional detention at the Conference Center property, which is adjacent to the college, and seeing if that can be turned into more of a regional facility that would not just accommodate the college and the Conference Center grounds, but possibly other areas that develop within that basin. And the second one was also looking at the stormwater utility fee, looking at that program to where we are now a phase-two city based on the last census, which essentially means we have that stormwater program, which we have. And here, we have to monitor, there's different things that we have to do to get EPA, TCQ requirements. And so the first presentation, we have Niraj Churnia with T. Neil Perkins, he'll present, he'll be dealing with the regional detention stormwater, and just make sure we say stormwater, not one point closer to the detention thing, it means like a jail or a prison similar close to the Conference Center, but it's for stormwater, regional detention. And then the next item will be talking about the stormwater utility side. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Niraj.
Thank you, Mike. I have to hold this way down.
That's why I was flexing.
Thank you, Mike. Mayor and Council, and Senator Banff appreciate y'all having me out here again tonight. I'm excited, actually, today, because I get to come up here and not talk about TCQ and EPA and environmental stuff. A little bit different today, so I'm excited about that. The first study I'm gonna talk about is the regional detention study. Mike gave y'all the lead in on that. So the background, a few items I like to discuss with y'all today is the background of the study, where the study project location is. Just a really quick theory on regional detention. I know the calculus of it is probably not something y'all wanna hear, I'll try to cut that out. What we found in our study and what some of our conclusions were. So as Mike mentioned, the city currently owns the Creek Bend Detention Facility. It is adjacent to the Midlothian Conference Center. It was originally constructed to alleviate flooding that was occurring downstream. There's a natural creek that's impounded in this detention pond. And there's recently been development upstream by way of Kroger, and Kroger, as y'all probably know, has their own detention facility on site to reduce their downstream discharges. So the goals of this study were, can that existing Creek Bend facility be used as a regional detention facility? Does the channel that flows into the pond have capacity to convey those discharges to the pond if the watershed fully developed? Can the existing pond on the Kroger side be eliminated? And would a future HEB or similar type facility need detention in the watershed? Those were the four items we looked at with this study. So the project location on the map there. Here's a better close-up of it, you can see the Conference Center and Navarro College. Of course, the pond is adjacent to that. As I mentioned, the pond impounds an unnamed tributary to Wausahatchee Creek. Crosses under Mount Zion Road, by the way, and as it leaves the pond, it then crosses Midlothian Parkway. So just really quick snapshot, what is regional detention? So I'm sure everybody here has seen a detention pond, whether you know it or not, these are just a couple examples. They, sometimes they're dry, sometimes they have water in them. If they have a permanent water surface, we call them a retention pond. But basically, it is a basin that temporarily collects rain runoff and then regulates how much flow is discharged out of that pond. A regional pond is just a detention pond, it just serves a larger area, as shown on this schematic. You can see on the left there, a schematic of regional detention, you have fewer ponds, but larger ponds, that handle larger areas versus having a watershed with several small ponds for each site. So how does a detention pond work? It's just like the bathtub we get in every day. I'm a big bubble bath fan, Mayor, I don't know if you are or not, but I am.
In the right.
In the right. Clock foot tubs, I mean, we have sort of a record. But essentially, the more you tighten that outlet at the bottom, the more water fills up in that tub, and the less is going out of the tub. And that's detention in a nutshell. So the Creek Bend Pond itself, I have a few photos here. This is the berm or top of dam. We surveyed it at an elevation of just under seven twenty. This is a picture of the primary concrete spillway on the dam. This is when flows get high enough in a large rainstorm event, flows would be discharged through this spillway. A quick shot of the dimensions, fifteen feet wide, forty feet at its top, fifteen at the bottom, about six feet tall, so this is a little tall to me. That's in high flows where water would be going through that spillway. Now, your run-of-the-mill everyday events, there's actually a pipe at the bottom of that dam that releases flow. This is a picture of that pipe. And I have a couple photos of the existing box culvert structures, both at Mount Zion Road and at Midlothian Parkway. At Mount Zion, there's currently two ten-foot wide by seven-foot tall box culverts. At Midlothian Parkway, there's three ten-foot wide by seven-foot tall box culverts. And here's what our study found. When we did our study, when we do studies of this nature, we assume that the watershed is in a fully developed condition. So you can see on the photo there, that the watershed is the land from which any rainfall that falls at this boundary drains into the pond. And that's just under five hundred acres, so it's actually a pretty large, pretty large area. You can see the extent of that, that's the black outline there. You can see where Kroger sits in the middle of all that. And we assume that all that area, even though it's open, is built out, so that as we build facilities, we know we are building them to work in perpetuity. So this four hundred eighty acres produces twenty-one hundred cubic feet per second of runoff in a hundred-year storm. Now, a hundred-year storm is a storm that has a one percent chance of occurring in any given year, that's the way that's defined. As we're looking at a regional facility, we wanna make sure, the purpose, of course, of a regional facility again, is to reduce the onus for detention on individual sites in the watershed. But to do that, we have to make sure that there's a mechanism by which that these sites, if they're not gonna detain, that their undetained runoff can be still conveyed downstream to this regional facility. So if we looked at that here, you see here, this blue shading is if a hundred-year storm occurred, where would the flood plain be? If that spread of water, the depth of water. And as you can see on this photo, south or south of Mount Zion Road, or upstream of Mount Zion Road, it's largely contained within the channel corridor there, meaning that if everything develops with no detention, it will largely fit within the creek and be able to make its way down to a regional detention facility, assuming that the Creek Bend facility were upgraded to act as a regional detention facility. You'll also notice that the vlogs get a little bigger around Mount Zion Road and Midlothian Parkway. I'll talk about that, I'll talk about why in a second, but basically, in a hundred-year storm, what our models indicate is that Mount Zion and Midlothian would be overtopped, so water would be going over the road. That's why the vlogs get a little bigger there. So what we found, again, is that the creek is able to handle fully developed discharges, that's good, it means it can get the flows down to the pond. Mount Zion and Midlothian would overtop, so that would not meet the city's current criteria. The pond would also overtop in a hundred-year design storm, which also would not meet the city's criteria. So as designed, that dam elevation was designed to be at a seven twenty. Survey shows it to be just less than that. That could occur for various reasons, through settlement of the soils or what have you, so, but it is less than that. And what we are showing is if a hundred-year storm occurred today, that berm itself would be overtopped, which is not as intent as designed. The hundred-year water surface elevation, you can see, is just two tenths above where it was supposed to be designed. So the conclusions and recommendations of our study then were to raise the berm so that it would contain a hundred-year flow. So the current berm elevation again is seven nineteen point six. Our study showed that it would need to be raised to be seven twenty-one point seven. That includes what we call freeboard. So when we design a pond, we know where the water surface elevation is gonna be, we try to build a little more safety in it by building the dam a little higher. So we call that freeboard, that free distance. And the estimated cost of that, including minor adjustments in spillway, would be about five hundred thousand dollars. So that's what it would take to make the Creek Bend, the current Creek Bend Pond serve as a regional detention facility for that four hundred eighty acre watershed. Now, in addition to that, as I mentioned, the current structures at Midlothian Parkway and Mount Zion would be overtopped, so to alleviate that overtopping, it would require additional box culverts to be added at both locations. And you see the cost there, both of those, projected costs of those projects, both also right around half a million dollars. And then one of the questions of the study was, can the pond on the Kroger side be eliminated altogether? So the fundamentals behind that would be, as it is today, the Kroger Pond sees a lot of inflow, represented by the blue arrows. The pond mitigates that flow and releases it at a lower rate, that's the small yellow arrow. If that pond were eliminated, you still don't have a large inflow that has to go somewhere. So a special structure would have to be designed to convey that larger flow. We've estimated that the size of that structure, if the Kroger Pond were eliminated, would be about eleven hundred feet, four fifty warning pipes. And the estimated cost of that would be, of just that improvement alone, would be just under two point four million dollars. So another question we were asked is, for this tract of land, which is just west of the school property, you know, what are the detention needs for that particular site? What we have found is, as that site develops, one of two things will have to happen. It will not likely be able to develop without some sort of detention, so some sort of detention will be needed on that site. Another option in lieu of detention would be to reconstruct this entire storm drain system that's under the highway, make it bigger to handle the flows, the increased flows from development of that site. So those are two options there. More than likely, the more feasible option would be some sort of detention on that site. Even if the only way, the option two listed here, which is improving the system in large it, that would only be viable if this pond were converted to a regional detention pond. So if this improvement were waived, it would eliminate the detention need on that particular tract, as well as the other ones upstream. So that in a nutshell was, the purpose of that study was to, so can Kroger's pond be eliminated? Yes, with contingencies and improvements downstream, it can be. Can the detention be eliminated on the HEB lot? Yes, assumed that a regional detention facility is constructed downstream. Other improvements, as I mentioned, would have to happen to make all this possible, but those, that is what it would take according to our study. So I'd have to answer any questions about this.
About five million dollars or more?
I think the total, if you add it up, would be about five million, four or five million dollars.
And Chris, so that I understand the purpose of what we're doing, it is so that we're able to then come up with a fee that can be incorporated into commercial permits for... we're able to come up with a fee that can be incorporated into commercial permits for water, stormwater drainage costs to the city in the future?
Well, the next item is, is going to go over, there are various ways in which you can implement a stormwater fee, which is the next presentation, but that's just one idea of a way to, and recall that the reason that this was done in the first place was to see if we could, by getting this regionalized, if we could create more developable property.
But is this focused on mainly that 663-287 hub only, or is there a way for us to take this to other regions of the city?
Other regions, we talked about that, we were starting, we were starting with this one, but yes, we were going to start with this one, but the idea was, is that this is something we wanted to do, yes, we would start looking at other basins around the community and start establishing regional facilities instead of all of the local, I'm calling localized, if you will, detention facilities, like the Kroger site, had to build their, is that a nine-acre detention pond?
It's a nine-acre.
Those cost structures have to be input in the forefront, there's no way to recoup those cost structures afterwards as Kroger already exists.
The only way would be to recover that property and then you would have that value of that property as, you know, some type of commercial or retail development. Where the pond sits now, that becomes something that has value, is taxable, has a use to it. And so what council had directed at that time as part of that workshop was, what we're seeing is, we're seeing a lot, like Chris indicated, a lot of smaller, more localized ponds, which worked fine, because the question was, can you look at doing more of a regional type scale? And then this was kind of the first one, because, yes, sir, we've currently had that pond in place right now.
So how large would the property of HEB, how large would they have built there too in these nine acres?
No, it's going to be based on whatever size, essentially looking at, what we've always done is, you know, the way it sits right now, undeveloped, we're looking at the difference between what the developed flow and the undeveloped flow is. So as your flow increases, because you've developed now with the impervious, that's what you're looking at detaining, so it's not, everything that hits that property you have to detain, it's, right now, there's runoff coming from that property, when it gets developed, you'll have that increase in that runoff, and so it's that delta, that increase, that they have to detain.
Mike, wasn't there runoff at the Kroger property before they put all that concrete in there?
Yes, sir.
So that delta necessitated a nine-acre pond?
Part of it was because, if you go back, and I'm not sure if you can see that, I have to go back to it real fast, one of the things that we have right here, and Kroger acknowledged is, originally, when this property was going to develop, the developer actually owned this property here on the other side, that was given to the city for use for detention for when this property developed. What the developer on this side is, they're trying to reclaim that property back as a condition of being able to reclaim that property back and potentially develop that at some point while they're working on the roadway. They agreed that they would oversize the detention on the Kroger site to take care of this.
So that's going to expand drainage as well?
Exactly, that's what they agreed to, yes, sir.
So, just for my understanding, because I am one of those that it's affected by that creek bend, so if we, eventually, I'm not saying now, but one of these days, if it does happen and the city makes that original, is that now going to make my creek rise higher? And it already did up during floods, I mean, it goes up, but it pretty well comes back down.
Yeah, so, great question. When these types of ponds are designed, the intent is to maintain.
Exactly what we have.
And not adversely impact the downstream conditions, so.
But it's been wonderful since that went in, because we haven't had at least the water up close to our deck.
So if it were to be improved into a regional facility, the outlet would be reconfigured if needed to not increase downstream flow.
Just wanted to understand, whether I needed to move now?
I think this came about, obviously, the Kroger site, I think, caught a bunch of people by, you know, with the sheer size of that pond. And then also, I think, at the time we were talking about, which is now the hospital site up by George Hopper, was going to have another detention area, and it just kept, we kept seeing where we're just taking developable property, sometimes prime developable property, and carving it out for relatively large drainage facilities. So can we facilitate that with these types of improvements? This was just the first of what might would be many, I think, around town that we would need to do all the time.
Would the hospital property flow back into this regional?
It actually, it actually does not, it actually goes through the church on the church side, but they are, their plans right now, they do show onsite, they don't have a retention on their site, because the church pond can't handle it and that goes through creek bend as well. And that's actually, the church actually, they have a well, and that's a retention/detention, so they're recirculating, taking water back up and stuff like that, but it's not set up to handle anything that's upstream, that's going to be developed, and that's what the hospital knows, so they, there are engineers that have made provisions for that.
And that five million, give or take dollars, would that include the reworking of all that drainage under the highway?
Correct one, the, that would not include the highway.
So we, that would still be an expense on top of the, your five million, it's just the Kroger elimination, I mean, the Kroger elimination and the beefing up of the current retention. So if we, we're still going to have to deal with HEB either onsite or move it to the regional, and to move it to the regional, you're going to have to do all that drainage under and around the highway, which is probably going to be another four or five million dollars.
And that's why we didn't, we asked them just to kind of look and see, because typically, when the highway, you know, when the state designs, things are not designed for fully developed 100-year flows, that's what these facilities are designed for, the detention facilities. So just looking at it, knowing what that cost would be, we didn't ask them to do a cost, because just right now, it's going to be cost prohibitive, trying to go, you know, more under the highway, make all those improvements under the highway. On that side, on our side, when I say on our side, on the south side, off the Kroger site, there is the possibility of doing that, it's just a matter of, you know.
So really, really, we don't, we don't have the option of bringing HEB site to this regional because it's not feasible from a cost standpoint, is that right?
Yes, and looking at probably what they would need from a capacity standpoint and a land, land volume or area standpoint, would probably not account for the cost that would be needed because of the highway.
Back to that, our study did look at, in pretty good detail, that site, and so what we found, I generalize my conclusions just to keep this presentation short, but what we found is there is some, not a lot, but some residual capacity in the current highway system. So what likely could happen is the developer of the HEB side could send, they may not have to detain all of the delta, they may just have to detain some of it, and they could send a little more flow into the highway.
Into the current system.
Correct.
But over a period of time, with the land costs and the development, we're eventually going to need to look at the regional type to avoid all these smaller, two-acre, nine-acre, because developers get a little skittish when it's at least 35,000 an acre of, and they have to give the land up for a pond, you know, when they can put a building down, they can produce a lot of animal.
And there are one things, one thing that we're actually doing is, the requirement is that you have to put a detention on your property, but we say you can do a downstream assessment, if that assessment shows that the downstream can accommodate and handle what your developed flow is, you don't have to do the detention. What we'd like to see, again, is do that assessment, is, you know, if you have too many ponds out there, they can create adverse impacts downstream that you don't want, and so you better not have a pond in the circumstance and let all that flow through before, you know, another pond is speaking, and so all that's being looked at as well.
Okay, we can, there's no action, Roger, Chris, no, let's look at the next item. 2018-297 received a presentation from T. Nolan Perkins on the City of Midlothian Stormwater Utility Fee Study.
Thank you, Mike. Counsel, I'm going to turn it over to Neera here in just one second, and along the same lines, we have discussed the fact that as we grow, as we continue to develop, as our population increases, we are now considered a Phase II city from a stormwater standpoint, and so there are certain requirements that we have to adhere to that involve EPA and TCEQ. As we continue to grow, those are just going to kind of continue to grow on us as well, and so there's a lot of really kind of unfunded mandates that are going to start being pushed onto the city because of population and because of the impacts that growth has on water quality, on erosion, on drainage, and so counsel, as well at the workshop, had asked staff to bring a study back that looked at stormwater utility fees and all turnover and Neera's debt.
Thank you, Mike. I'm back, counsel. Appreciate y'all having me again. So as Mike mentioned, our firm, TNP, did evaluate what cities' stormwater utility fee. I'd like to go through it really briefly. If any questions, I'm happy to answer. There's some discussion here about rate equations and structures, for the sake of time, I'm not going to get into the finer years and details of that, but I can, I'm happy to if questions are. So I said I wouldn't talk about EPA, but here I am, about to do it. As Mike mentioned, one of the unfunded mandates that the city has been required to meet is this EPA-TCEQ Stormwater MS4 program. Y'all heard me up here a few times talk about that, and the city does a great job of being a steward of that program and adhering to that program, and so you may have seen some of these graphics before, but it is an unfunded mandate. It's something that the federal government, state government says, okay, City of Midlothian, you have to do this, we're not going to assist you in paying for this, but you have to do this. So how do you fund these unfunded mandates? Well, one way of doing that is a stormwater utility. So again, just really quickly, I'll talk about the background of the utility, the authorization, and some of the legal nuances, some of the benchmarking we did for adjacent communities, how the rate was developed and the basis for which it was developed, some of the logistics that are involved with billing and administration of such a utility, and then, you know, maybe a recommendation. So background, again, the Texas Local Government Code allows cities and municipalities to establish a stormwater utility. It has to be fair and equitable, and one of the goals would be for it to be easily administered to reduce overhead costs in this nature. So it is stormwater utility, a lot of people don't realize it, but it is, just like water or sewer or electric, stormwater is considered a utility, and essentially it allows a fee to be assessed for services provided. For a stormwater utility, the fees have to be used for stormwater-related expenses. So really quickly, what is stormwater? Stormwater is surface water resulting from rain that does not infiltrate into the ground. So I found this to be very interesting. NCT cog does population projections, they update them periodically. Ellis County is actually projected to be one of the largest growth areas in the NCT cog region, with a projected growth almost of doubling in the next 20 years, or a little over 20 years, so that's incredible, incredible growth anticipated for Ellis County and I think Midlothian as a result. So you can see some of these projections here. Midlothian has already experienced tremendous growth, starting back from the 1940s to where we are today, up near 25,000 perhaps, well over that now with annexations and whatnot. But where is Midlothian tomorrow going to be? I think it's going to be a lot bigger, a lot more people served. This is just an overlay of the city's limits with the various land modules that are in the city's comprehensive plan. And as you can see, most of these modules will result in more development throughout the city. So what causes increases in runoff? That's the basis of the stormwater utility. Essentially, it's increases in impervious area. So undeveloped land has more pervious area, more grasses, open spaces, fields, and thereby there's more land for water to infiltrate. Well, when development occurs and these grasslands are converted to rooftops and parking lots, there's now less pervious surface and more impervious surface, and as a result, more water runs off. So how do you deal with the impacts and the growing impacts of more stormwater runoff? There's higher flow rates, as Mike alluded to, more erosion, more downstream flooding, how do you remediate these things and how do you pay for that remediation? So the stormwater utility is authorized in the Texas Local Government Code, Section 552, which was established in 1987, and it applies to benefited properties, we'll talk about that momentarily. It can be implemented in the city or in the ETJ per the law. And in a success to a benefited property, and it must be assessed in a nondiscriminatory, equitable, and reasonable manner, basing a utility fee on property value is not allowed by the law. What can the funds be used for? They can be used for covering the cost of service pertaining to stormwater-related needs. So that could be land acquisition for a stormwater project, that could be operation and maintenance, personnel, professional fees, debt service and bond issuance, construction costs and administrative costs, just to name a few. So there are some mandatory exemptions as required by the law, there are certain properties that cannot be assessed a stormwater utility. These are examples, or these are the specific types of uses that cannot be assessed a fee, which would be a property with a wholly sufficient private drainage system, an undeveloped property, or a subdivided lot that does not have a structure and has not been issued or a certificate of occupancy, so basically a vacant lot could not be assessed a fee. There are users that can optionally be exempted from being assessed a utility fee. These are state, county, and municipal facilities, federal also, school districts, nonprofit churches, and then very specific cemeteries that are closed to new internments and variables that can be optionally exempted. So what are the logistics of adopting the utility? The income generated from the utility must be reported separately as a line item in the city budget. The city can't issue bonds against the utility revenue, but prior to enacting and administering a utility fee, there has to be public carings and coordinates of that to be adopted, two of them. So some benchmarking, you know, when we do these types of rate studies, it's often helpful to know what are other people doing, what are our neighbors doing, what's kind of common practice? So incidentally, the state of Texas, in the 50 great states, the state of Texas has the fourth most stormwater utilities of all states. Surprisingly, Minnesota and Wisconsin have the most, and most of those utilities are located here, in the state of Texas, most of the utilities are centered here in the DFW North Texas region. I want to talk about this ERU term, which I'm going to, which pops up several times. An ERU is an equivalent residential unit, and it's essentially a unit of measure when we talk about a study for centuries. And what it does is it correlates larger properties or unique properties to more of a standardized type unit or fixed object. So for the purposes of this study and for a potential utility in the City of Midlothian, we've assumed that this ERU is going to be correlated to a typical residential dwelling, and we'll talk about how this impacts or how this plays into the rest of this study. But the benchmarking, the reason I want to talk about ERUs, because an ERU, some type of benchmark is required by the law when you do a utility. So you'll see here, a list of all, several cities, 15 cities that we've benchmarked, and how they structure their residential, this is the residential piece of their stormwater utility, whether it's a flat or tiered rate, it just varies by city, there's no rhyme or reason necessarily. And then the fee that they assess per ERU, and that ERU is set differently by every city, but the fee assessed by ERU is there in the right column. It varies. The communities highlighted there in orange are communities that we felt were either nearby Midlothian or similar in makeup and composition, so those are what the orange highlights represent on the table. And you can see the costs vary from, you know, potentially a dollar up to, I see 12 is potentially the highest there. I see twelve is potentially the highest there. So a lot of communities break out residential, and they also categorize non-residential properties, and they are assessed a stormwater utility fee differently. A lot of communities, as you can see in the middle column there, do this by impervious area, and so what that means is that for every non-residential property in the city, somebody has gone and calculated the exact square footage of impervious area, whether that's rooftop, driveway, carport, what have you, for every property, and then they assess a fee based on that individually for every property. Others, there's different ways of doing it, others do it by lot size, so all the ones we benchmark here do it by impervious area, so somebody's gone and measured for every, every last lot in the city. And again, you can see the value of the ERU, so, you know, what is the ERU equate to in square foot, we'll talk about that more, but I've tabulated it there in the right column. And then what is the revenue, what does a rev, utility revenue generate, how much is generated in each of these cities? Again, this is, this is reported in the budgets of publicly available data, but you can see the, the revenue generated by city just varies greatly, there's no correlation, very weak correlation, and cities of this size generate this much revenue, because it's all based on need, as we'll talk about, so it can vary just based on the rates that are set. So how are the rates developed? We take the city, and for the purpose of this study, we've broken it down into four categories, residential, non-residential, which would include apartments, retail stores, banks, schools, churches, post offices, industrial, Midlothian, as y'all know, has a large industrial base with several industrial users, the land composition, as we'll go through, is very different for the industrial users as compared to a residential or a commercial lot. So for this, for the rate and the study to be fair and equitable, industrial has to be treated a little bit separately the way its fees would be calculated. And then, of course, exempt properties, which would be city facilities, undeveloped lots, unimproved HOA owned lots. City facilities here are listed as exempt only because for the purposes of this study, it represents coming out of one city account and going into another city account, but still, as a whole, it's still within the city, so for our study, we've listed that as exempt. So part of this study included a parcel inventory of every parcel in the city, and what we found based on the Ellis County tax records, is that there are over ten thousand residential parcels currently, of which eighty, just under eighty-four hundred are currently approved as of, as of when we began this study. Non-residential, five hundred and seven parcels total, just under four hundred developed. Industrial, there's a hundred and seventy-five parcels, but it's hard, you can't necessarily for the industrial say what's improved, several, yeah, few industrial owners that own several lots, so we'll talk about the nuances of that. I found this to be very interesting, if you, if you took the total parcels in Midlothian and broke it up by parcel zoning, just under ninety percent are zoned as residential. If you do it by parcel area though, or aggregated area, over sixty percent of the area studied is actually industrial area. So that goes back to this duality I was mentioning, where you have a very unique user base with industrial users. So what are the considerations that go into the rate development? Well, that's going to be type of development, the size, how uniform are these developments, are all, are all non-residential, similar, maybe, maybe not? We talked about the pervious, impervious runoff coefficient, I won't get into a lot of details, but this is, in essence, when you're trying to calculate the discharge from a site, you need a coefficient to represent how much impervious area is on that site, so you'll see that this coefficient represents that. For, for instance, an industrial, commercial site, it's a lot higher than a residential site, as, as more runoff from a shopping center than you would from a single family residence. And for the purposes of this study, we said we were going to set this equivalent residential unit to be the typical residential lot size in the City of Midlothian. Now, what we found through our inventory of, of all the parcels in Midlothian, is that the average residential lot size in the city is a half acre lot. So what we said is this ERU, this equivalent residential unit, is going to be a half acre lot. And as I go through this, you'll see why this ERU, or how it plays into the equations. So for the purposes of this study, what we have suggested is that all residential lots, all single family residential lots, regardless of their size, whether they're a quarter acre, half acre, one acre, two acre, if it's a residential lot, it'd be assessed a fee based on one ERU, so they would all be assessed the same fee. The, the reasoning or logic behind that would be that you may have residential lots of different sizes, but typically, the homes on these lots are similar sizes, and so you'd still expect the runoff to be similar. So example, these are two, two lots in Midlothian, one, the one on the left is a half acre, the one on the right is a two acre, but you can see that the, the actual structure size or impervious area size is pretty similar, just over three thousand square feet. So we, we developed a rate equation for that, without going into too much detail, X represents the, I'm an engineer, so I have to, I have to do some algebra here, but X represents what the utility rate would be selected by, by the city and council. Z represents the ERU calculation, which for any residential lot, we're saying that's just one, and then M is a multiplier that correlates how much impervious is on this lot compared to an ERU lot, which would be a residential. So for, for the residential calculation, even your multiplier is one. So, so to do a sample calculation, which I think will help, if, let's say the city selected a rate of two dollars per month for ERU, then a residential lot would expect to pay two dollars a month, flat rate, whether you're a quarter acre or a two acre residential lot, assuming that a two dollar rate was selected. So these examples represent that, the top is that half acre lot, the bottom is a two acre lot, when it's all said and done, assuming a two dollar rate, two dollars will be, what would be assessed to, to either, either number. Midlothian also has several non-residential users, there's just a sample of one there on the right. What we found was that the average non-residential lot size, which includes multifamily, commercial, schools, churches, is about five acres. So five acres equals ten ERU, because we're saying one ERU is a half acre lot, so your average, what we're saying there is your average non-residential lot has about, sorry, yeah, ten times more impervious area on it than your single family lot. And so for a non-residential property, we would recommend that a stormwater fee be a, a flat monthly rate based on